Hebrews 12, verses 1 through 4 in our text for these meetings. Hebrews chapter 12, verses 1 through 4. Wherefore seeing we also are compassed about with so great a cloud of witnesses, let us lay aside every weight and the sin which does so easily beset us, and let us run with patience the race that is set before us. Looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith, who for the joy that was set before him endured the cross, despising the shame, and is set down at the right hand of the throne of God; for consider him that endured such contradiction of sinners against himself, lest you be wearied and faint in your minds. He hath not yet resisted under blood striving against sin. Our heavenly Father. Thank you, Lord, that we're having this meeting this evening. Lord, in my frustration and despair, I almost canceled meetings tonight, and I'm sorry. Lord, I apologize, not just to you, Lord, as I've been called all day, but Lord to this church. Lord, not that they were witness to my humanity, or because it's good for folks to understand that just because I've been called to be a pastor doesn't make me something special, that I'm not above the weaknesses and frailties of humanity. But, Lord, because I let it get the better of me, and for that, I'm sorry. And so again, Father, I pray and ask for your blessings upon this service tonight. Lord, if not for me, and I pray, Lord, for me, but, Lord, for their sakes most of all. Lord, and for those that have been following along, Lord, a great many folks now, Lord, following the messages, the preaching, the teaching, Lord, coming out of this little church up here and central in New England, in the heart, Lord, of the realm, Lord of the great core, where we battle, Lord, trying to reach the lost with the gospel of Jesus Christ. Blessed, Lord, I pray, give glory to thyself out of all that's said and done this evening, as it ought to be, and we pray and ask for it in Christ's name. Amen. Our text is going to come out of the second half of verse 1 this evening. Let us lay aside every weight and the sin which does so easily beset us, and let us run with patience the race that is set before us. Now, there's going to be four subheadings in this evening's message. Number one, let us lay aside every weight. Number two, the sin that does so easily beset us. Number three is let us run with patience the race. And number four is the race that is set before us. And of course, again, the context of each of these is looking unto Jesus and how he dealt with each of these four things. Let us lay aside every weight. Like a standaway aside some weight. You know, it's very hard to run a race and to expect to win that race if you go into it way down with things that are going to hinder you from winning, hinder you from running. Of course, that's the whole intent, is you run to win. Thing is, as human beings, we have a tendency to pick up a lot of unnecessary and needless weights in our lives. Some folks will refer to them as baggage. And though sometimes they are indeed physical, more often they're mental and emotional weights that we have chosen, chosen to pick up and carry. That's the problem, you picked it up. You know, your mind, especially when you're young, your mind is like a sponge. Mind like tapioca anymore. Thing is, it does not discriminate about what it is that it records and hangs on to. You know, I struggle ever since the accident that I had 20 years ago to recall Scripture because of the head trauma. I have to really work at it anymore. That's, as y'all know, that's why I have to write my messages out, literally, word for word. I can't do a bullet point, outline anymore. Can't do it. You know, but some meaningless piece of trivia, some piece of garbage picked up 50 years ago when I was a teenager will come into my mind as clear as crystal and usually unbidden and undesired. Thing is, your flesh is going to use those things as a tool to get at you and to attack you and to undermine you. So too will the devil. Some devil come up and whisper some reminder in your ear of something that you wished you would never known and that you could erase and forget. That's when you need to plead the blood of Jesus Christ, pray for that cleansing. Then there are the weights of things like worry, fear, anxiety, dread. Those can cover an awful lot of people and an awful lot of things beside yourself personally. Health, finances, relationships, situations of living, safety, just to name a few. Go over to Luke chapter 9 with me, if you would please. Gospel of Luke chapter 9, we're looking at verses 57 and 58. Chapter 9, 57 and 58. It came to pass that as they went in the way, a certain man said unto him, "Lord, I will follow thee whithersoever thou goest." Jesus said unto him, "Foxes have holes; the birds of the air have nests." I mean, who'd want to live in a hole in the ground or a nest of sticks, right? But the Son of Man had not where to lay his head. Our Lord had not been born into a wealthy family. He was not born into a condition of status and wealth and well-being when he came here as a man. He had known hardship. He had known want. He had known hard, physical labor for the first 30 years of his life. In other words, he lived like the vast majority of humanity, not the 2% or so that live in total ease and carelessness. Then during his three-and-a-half-year ministry, the Lord had no home to live in by choice. He had no employment to provide means. There wasn't some home church that was sending him a check every month. There wasn't some mission board that was sending him money to get by off. And everything that he owned, he would wear. He had zero baggage, zero baggage to weigh him down, to include any worry or any concern about physical necessities of this mortal life. He didn't worry about that. Need to think about that. Matthew chapter 6. Matthew chapter 6. Pick it up, verse 32. For all these things, talking about, you know, what shall we eat? What shall we drink? Where withal shall we be clothed? For all these things that the Gentiles seek, isn't that what the world's chasing after? In excess. For your heavenly Father knoweth that you have need of all these things; but seek ye first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you. Take therefore no thought for the morrow; for the morrow shall take thought for the things of itself sufficient unto the day as the evil thereof. Father, know it that you have need of all these things. But he knows we have an even greater need, and it's the spiritual. And sometimes you might have to do without the physical in order to gain the spiritual. We talked about that with Paul last night. Yeah, Paul got a sneak peek of heaven, but he had to get stoned to death to get it. As I said, that's some tough love right there. Yes, sir. The Lord's priorities were in the right order, and his motives behind what he did were correct as well. God the Father and his will were the Lord's number-one priority all the time, every time. And so we, just as the Lord had done, need to lay aside every weight that would hinder us from doing the Lord's will in our lives. If it is not going to aid and assist you, if it's not a means to the end of fulfilling the Lord's will in your life, then either leave it alone or if it's something that has to be dealt with, yes, sir, Lord, something that has to be dealt with, then only give to it as much time and attention as is absolutely necessary for that item, and then get back to business. Keep your priorities and your motives straight. So essential in this life. Number two, the sin that does so easily beset us. This is very real. And every one of us, every one of us, from the pulpit on back, has a besetting sin that you have to deal with. How do I know you do? Because I do. I'm no different. I'm no better than you are. You can lie to others about it, and you can lie to yourself about it. You can't lie to God. He knows what it is, same as you do. Problem is, guess what? Your flesh knows about it, and the devil knows about it too. You know, devil spends a great amount of time just sitting back and watching people. He know, I mean, you want to know somebody that knows human psychology, you know? Not quite as good as the Lord does, but I want to tell you what? He knows people, and he watches you. I know a lot of the troubles and trials and difficulties that have been coming on me in recent days because I got his attention. He doesn't like what I'm doing. He doesn't like folks I'm reaching. He doesn't like what I'm trying to do in my personal life, as well as what I'm trying to do outside of that. So it's okay. What can we do to push this fellow's buttons? What can we do to get at him? Well, how can we get under his skin? And he does that with every one of you. He does that with every one of you. You know, and that's why after a while, a lot of folks quit. Yeah, I'll tell you what, yeah, I wanted to quit this morning. Boy, did I want to quit this morning. But I didn't, and I'll tell you why. I've been down the road to quit before. I'll know my testimony. And it's got to be the most pointless, stupid thing you can do in your life as a believer. Just quit! Don't quit! We're more than victors. We're more than conquerors through Jesus Christ. Don't let it get you down. Yeah, we're all going to have our moments. Welcome to humanity. It stinks, doesn't it? Yeah, I'll be so glad to be rid of this thing. Don't quit. Don't quit. Don't quit. You're going to get to see the devil get his. You're going to get to see the Lord Jesus Christ get his. Get his crown, get his throne, get his kingdom, get his bride. And you're going to be right there next to him. And you're going to see the devil. Okay, the first shall be last, and the last shall be first. The first shall be last. Guess who's the last one on a great white throne of judgment of God? And I guarantee you, he's going to have to kneel down there before the Lord and confess that Jesus Christ is Lord before he gets tossed in the head forever. Don't quit. You know, maybe it's some sin that you've been given to before you were saved. Perhaps it's some temptation that came into your life after you'd been born again. The fact is, it's real and that it's there, and you're going to have to fight with it. And the only way that you're going to be able to subdue it, to defeat it, to keep it at bay, and to have victory over it is if you acknowledge it and then go after it in the Lord's way. Never mind trying to reform your flesh. Remember Romans 7:18? For I know that in me that is in my flesh there dwelleth no good thing. Never mind trying to reform this thing. Tain it up. Leave it by a leash, ring through its nose, make it serve you. Okay, the Lord conquered the flesh for you from the cross of Calvary. It's a dead and cursed thing, and it always will be. Okay, accept that truth. Crucify and mortify your flesh. It's dead, so treat it that way. It has no rights. It has no say. And I don't care what it tells you its needs are. You only give it what is absolutely necessary for you to serve God with it. Other than that, starve it and deprive it. Only need to provide for it what you decide the flesh needs to get so that you can serve God with your flesh. Okay, this has got to be a cognizant frame of mind, and it requires you making it a priority and an imperative motive. Keep your flesh under. We were talking about Sunday. You need to rise each day reporting for duty, understanding that as soon as you get out of bed, you're stepping into the trenches and going to war. And so you've got to prepare yourself spiritually for that battle. You need prayer. You need the Scripture. You need to put on the armor of God. You need to wield that sword of God. Okay, those are necessary things, and you must be aware that your besetting sin is going to attack you, and you have to be sure to give it no place to get through. You know, it's going to attack. It's all there is to it. That's the reality of it, yeah? It stinks. But that's the reality of what we're in, folks. Vast majority of believers today are AWOL. They're nowhere near the battle lines. Okay, your enemies are not going to cease. They're not going to stop trying to get at you. They're not going to stop trying to conquer you and get you to want to quit and get you to want to give up. And you've got to understand that, okay? That's why it tells us over there in 2 Corinthians 2:11, to not be ignorant of his devices. You need to go into battle every day, watching for and expecting to be attacked. Number three, let us run with patience the race. Just as the Lord Jesus Christ had his race to run during his mortal life, so too do we each have our own race to run. And the Lord, as I said, ran that race to win. You come in second, you lose. You come in second, you fail. The purpose behind running is to win. You know, the problem today, kids' sports and other contests and things, everybody's supposed to be a winner. Everybody's supposed to be celebrating. You know what that causes, what that creates? There's no motivation to excel or to achieve anymore. What difference it make? I'm still going to get a prize, right? There's no reason to push oneself. There's no reason to overcome obstacles in order to be the best that one can be. Doesn't make any difference. Doesn't matter that little Joey couldn't catch a baseball, okay, with a bathtub. We want to put him on the baseball team, and we're going to put him right out there in center field, right? You tried your best, you did good. Here's a medal for you. You know, you lost the game for the entire team, you know? Mediocrity in our society is okay. In fact, it's the standard. It's the standard. And this is what the average, lait descends believer excels at spiritually. Mediocrity. And every individual believer's race is different from everybody else's race. Okay, you're not going to run the same race that I do. I'm not going to run the same race you do. Never mind trying to run my race or telling me how to run it. I will tell you how to run your race, and I won't try to run it for you either. I'm busy running mine. You're not expected to run my race, nor am I expected to run your race. The Lord deals with each one of us on an individual basis. He does not require or expect of you anything more than what he knows you're capable of achieving. But he does require and expect what you're capable of achieving. And your race does not end, sorry, your race does not end until the Lord calls you home from this life, whether it be through mortal death, or if we're blessed, we're going home in the blessed hold, the rapture of the church. You don't cross the finish line until then. Now, it may be the last stretch of your race. Get up to your three score, 10, fourth score, you know, things may, you know, things might start slowing down a little bit there for you in the race because the Lord understands, okay, that the mule is getting old and tired and isn't going to run as fast as you'd like it to anymore. Okay? That's just one of the realities there. You can expect that, yeah, God's going to understand that and realize that, yeah, he's only going to expect from you, require from you what he knows it is you're capable of doing. But what you're capable of doing, he expects and requires. Number four, the race that is set before us. Patient continuance. Patient continuance is a necessity. Romans 2:7. To them whom by patient continuance in well-doing seek for glory and honor immortality eternal life. Your race must be run with patience, with deliberateness, with determination, in a continuing effort to reach the finish line. And if you quit and leave the track, you didn't finish the race. Now, you might have to drag yourself across the finish line. Somebody may have to pick you up and help you cross the finish line. But you finished. You quit. You didn't finish the race. You didn't finish the race. Go to Philippians 3 again. Been there a lot this week already. We're going to read Philippians 3:13 and 14. Brethren, I count not myself to have apprehended but this one thing I do: forgetting those things which are behind and reaching forth unto those things which are before. I press towards the mark for the prize of the high calling of God in Christ Jesus. Your eyes and your heart must always be focused on reaching that mark. That's a successful life. Doesn't matter how successful a secular career you had, how much money you put in the bank, how well your family turned out, how nice your property looked. All that stuff doesn't matter in the end. I'm not saying they're bad things, but if that's where your focus is, if that's where you're putting your efforts in, if that's what you think is winning the race, you're not even on the track. You press towards the mark for the prize of the high calling of God in Christ Jesus. If our eventual end is to be conformed to the image of the Lord Jesus Christ, then that's what we're pressing towards. Well, yes, we said Sunday, are you going to accomplish that in your mortal lifetime? No, no, we can't, as long as we're hindered by this thing. That's not a reason to not strive for it, though. You're going to make mistakes. You're going to stumble. You're going to trip. You're going to get tired. You're going to get frustrated. You're running that race, and that hill just makes seem like, eh, it's just, you know? Don't quit. Keep going. The crowns and the rewards that you will receive The crowns and the rewards that you will receive, as well as your position, your work, your authority for all of eternity. Think about that. All of eternity, a long time, are all determined by what you achieve here and now in that little speck of what is your human life.